Good evening. Thank you for all being here. This is an exciting moment for us, so we'll continue on. We have a number of presentations this evening and I'm glad you're here to participate with this. Is somebody actually doing this? Oh, good. It's you. Thank you.
I'll do my part.
Okay, great.
So, good evening, Mayor Council. I am Kirsten Lennon. I'm the Financial Services Director, currently interim IT Director, which is why I get to be up here right now. So, our first award we're going to hand out is the Employee of the Fourth Quarter for 2024. And tonight, it's Alejandra Ramirez, who is the winner. She doesn't know. So, that she won the Employee of the Fourth Quarter. And I sneakily asked who was going to be the IT representative and didn't tell her, so she didn't even have a clue at all. So, she got nominated by both Steve Hensel and Joseph Meeger, who are colleagues, who are also in the IT Department. And they both nominated her because she's probably one of the most dedicated IT employees I've ever seen. She is diligent. She shows up whenever someone has a problem. She's always willing to help. She's very patient with everyone who needs assistance. And she will do anything to make sure that you are up and running again. And she's probably one of the sweetest young things I've ever met. And she's going to come up here and receive a reward. And she's also going to be having a baby in like three weeks. So, you got employee... somewhere over here is your... right here, the first one. So, here's your award.
Thank you.
And there's a check in the bag, so don't lose that. And then, I think what we'll do is a picture at the end of everyone, so that you don't have to get up and down over and over again. So, would you like to say something?
Thank you so much for the city and council for having me here. I love being here. I love IT and thank you so much, Kirsten.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The next few items on the agenda this evening are yearly awards that we do every year. The Personnel Board gets to select our Employee of the Year, Supervisor of the Year, and Team of the Year. So, with the help of John from our IT Department, we've prepared some videos for you all, so you can watch who is nominated and why our winners actually won. So, Alejandra is going to help me with the first video for Employee of the Year.
Hello, I'm Brian Fruedenthal. I'm the Chief of Police for the City of Cottonwood. And I joined the Police Department in November of 24. And I'm here to recognize Commander Kevin Murray for the work that he did over the year of 2024. Kevin stepped up, no questions asked. Kevin took over. He made a lot of moves and decisions that were focused on employee wellness, focused on the community, focused on the City of Cottonwood. And Kevin has been an incredible employee for stepping up and taking on that role and being the leader that this Police Department needed. When I took over, coming in, it was a smooth transition between Kevin and I. And I can't thank him enough for his openness, his willingness to help me get through this beginning of my career here with the Cottonwood Police Department. What I can say is, nobody embodies community policing better than Kevin Murray. Kevin knows everybody in this community, which is a perfect example of what law enforcement should be and how we should serve a community by having those positive relationships. I can't go out of the office or out of the building without somebody coming over to say hi because they're friends with Kevin, because they know Kevin, or they've just seen him and they feel comfortable around Kevin. Kevin embodies that within the City of Cottonwood and within the Cottonwood Police Department. He's an incredible asset to us and to the city, to this community. Kevin makes decisions for this Police Department that are community-focused. All of his decisions are what's best for the City of Cottonwood, what's best for this community. And the reason for that is because he grew up here. He knows these people. He lives with these people. He shops with these people. He does everything within the community, which makes him such a great asset to us and a great asset to the city. Leadership. People look up to Kevin. He's done a phenomenal job as an officer, as a supervisor, as a leader on this Police Department. He takes care of his people. He does what he can to make sure that his officers are properly trained, the officers are ready to hit the streets, that the officers are focused on being professional, have the highest integrity, and at the same time, are out there and being proactive and really focusing on our community and our community needs. I can't think of a better leader. I can't think of a better employee for the City of Cottonwood to be recognized for this award.
We are extremely lucky to have Kevin on staff with us. This is definitely a well-deserved award. So, with that, I will invite Kevin up and present, for the third time, his award. We did present all of these to our all-in-one staff meetings on Thursday, so you actually get to keep it this time. So, thank you so much. And then, definitely, please stick around for a photo at the end as well. Thank you. And I'm so happy you brought your family too.
Yeah.
And feel free to say anything you would like.
Yeah. Evening, Council, Mayor. Just appreciate the recognition for whoever it was that recognized me. And I just, I'm honored to be here. My entire career has been here. Most of my life in this community is all here, so I just appreciate it and look forward to many more. So, thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, with that, we are going to move on to the Supervisor of the Year. Alejandra? Thank you.
Hello, I'm Brian Fruedenthal. I'm the Chief of Police for the City of Cottonwood. And I'm here to recognize Alexis James for the Supervisor/Manager of the Year for the City of Cottonwood and within our Police Department. Alexis has been amazing since I've come on. I've recognized her leadership skills. I've recognized her ability to connect with her employees, her ability to really focus on their needs. I've sat through hundreds of interviews. And in every interview, when we talk about leadership, everybody wants to mention servant leadership. I've not met a person that embodies servant leadership better than Alexis James. She is truly focused on the people, truly focused on those that she leads and the community, and the people as a whole. And she puts them above her own needs, which is what really a servant leader is all about, is putting others above your own needs. And I've seen that firsthand. I've seen her come in and work late-night shifts. I've seen her work an incredible amount of hours just to help with some of her employees, so they can be at home with their families, or they can be taking care of loved ones. And she goes above and beyond what is expected of a supervisor or manager as it comes to taking care of her employees. Also, she also goes out of her way to come up with special events and do special events for her teams, whether it's Harry Potter Week within Dispatch, or it's just an employee barbecue or employee luncheon, and whatever she can do to make it more comfortable for employees and to really truly focus on her employees' well-being. So, I want to recognize Alexis for her servant leadership. I truly see it in her. She wants to do what's best for the Police Department. She wants to do what's best for communications, but she especially wants to do what's best for employees. She embodies what a leader should be, especially here in the City of Cottonwood and within our Police Department. Thank you, Alexis.
Hi, my name's Jesse Smith. I'm one of the supervisors over at the Cotton Communications Center for Dispatch and 911 Needs. I nominated Alexis for Manager of the Year due to her commitment to our team, not just this past year, but over this past year in particular. She's exemplified what it means to bring heart to a team. She goes above and beyond each day to make sure that we're provided for. And in doing that, she really makes sure to take care of the community. And in doing that, gives the city a good name and good reputation. She'll do the big things and making sure all the chiefs are happy and all the employees are happy. And then, the small things of making sure she still gives back to the community in different ways, volunteering in different areas, different things like that. There's too many more to list in the short video announcements we need to do for these things. I nominate Alexis James for Manager of the Year.
Definitely another well-deserved award. We are definitely lucky to have Alexis with us as well. So, with that, please join me in welcoming Alexis and congratulating her. Again, for the third time, so please stick around for photos and please feel free to say anything you'd like.
Oh, boy. I was not prepared to talk. I just want to say thank you, and I am truly just appreciative and a little bit overwhelmed. I don't take this as an individual achievement, but as a reflection of the incredible people I get to work with every single day. I have learned so much from my team and my peers, and I'm grateful to be a part of a group that supports one another and serves our community. So, thank you.
And then, next, we will present Team of the Year.
This better not be the chief.
Hello, everybody. My name is Tom Rimmer, and I'm the current Acting City Manager for the City of Cottonwood. It is with great pleasure that I have the opportunity to announce the 2024 Team of the Year, a team that consistently goes above and beyond, collaborating with each and every department and delivering results that truly make a difference for the city. Despite their favorite word being "no" during budget season, this team performs a vital role in ensuring the accuracy of the city's finances are maintained. In addition to maintaining the city's financial well-being, they're responsible for payroll, which everyone is grateful for, accounts payable, collection of revenues, utility accounting, sales tax compliance, debt management, and city investments. Their hard work often happens behind the scenes, but today, we bring them front and center to celebrate their incredible contribution. So, please join me in congratulating the Finance Department as the 2024 Team of the Year. To the entire Finance Team, thank you for your commitment, professionalism, and teamwork. This recognition is well-deserved, and we're proud to have you as part of the city's team. Congratulations.
We have several members of the Finance Department here this evening, but of course, you know Kirsten is our Director, so I will let her speak.
Thank you. I was surprised that we got Team of the Year, but I am going to say that the only reason that we do is because of the four other people that are in the Finance Department. They do all the behind-the-scenes things that need to be done to make sure that payroll is done and that the bills get paid and that we are accounting for everything we need to. Without them, we would not function. I can't do it all myself, that's for sure. And so, I'm really appreciative of the entire team. We just lost one of our team members. She has moved on to Flagstaff to be their Budget Person. So, we're looking for a new team member. Whoever is excited to come work in our Finance Team that got a Team of the Year, we'd love to have you.
That concludes our annual awards. So, next, we will be moving on to Employee of the First Quarter for 2025. And Jack is going to present that.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Jack Teal, your Community Services Director. I'd first like to start by thanking you all for allowing us to acknowledge all of our great city employees. I think I've made it clear how I feel about the city. I'd put us up against any other organization. We truly accomplished a lot of amazing things by the people we have. I get the great recognition tonight, our responsibility to recognize Robert Gonzalez. So, I'd like to invite Robert up here with me. Many of you guys recognize Robert. He really is all over the place and at everything. Robert was nominated as Employee of the Quarter. And what is special about this is Robert was nominated by somebody outside of the Community Services Team. And so, I think that that speaks volume to the work Robert does and the meaningful impact it has on our organization and throughout all the different people Robert works with. So, Robert is the first to most things. He's right there with us, is the last to leave, goes above and beyond in everything we do. He brings a strong work ethic, strong character, and truly someone who I would pick or select to be on my team 10 times out of 10 times. Robert is an excellent human being, an excellent worker, and a great asset to the City of Cottonwood. And there's a lot of worthy people for these awards, and Robert is right there with them. So, I'd like to congratulate Robert. I invite you all to congratulate Robert with me in thanking him for representing the best of public service.
Hello, Madam Mayor and Council. I wasn't prepared to say anything, but I just glad to work under a great leadership of a boss that I have as well, so, you know. But thank you, guys, and thank the Rec Center and whoever nominated me. Thank you, guys.
Okay, so if Council and all of our winners could come up to the front to take a photo, that would be appreciated.
Ready? One, two, seven, go.
Hey, Robert, can you flip the board?
We'll post the first one. It's better. Ready? One, two, three.
Could we take a roll call, please?
Sure. Councilmember DeWelles?
Here.
Councilmember Dowell?
Here.
Councilmember Marks?
Here.
Councilmember Mosley?
Here.
Councilmember Weldon?
Here.
Vice Mayor Coats?
Here.
And Mayor Shaw?
Here.
And we have a quorum.
Would you all please rise and join me in the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. So next we have a summary of recent current events.
I'll start. On June 20th, council attended the ribbon cutting for the Eureka Room in Old Town. The new owners did a fabulous job of renovating the facility and creating a beautiful open space with lots of very vibrant artwork. On June 26th, I attended the quarterly meeting of the NACOG Regional Council. NACOG, or Northern Arizona Council of Governments, is the entity that administers some of the federal funding that our community relies on, and one of the biggest programs is Head Start. July 3rd was a proud day for the city as it held the ribbon cutting for the new playground at Riverfront Park. Kudos to the Parks and Recreation Department for enrolling the community in the selection of playground equipment and the color scheme for the equipment. On the 4th of July, council also attended and participated in the 4th of July festivities at the Cottonwood Kids Park. The turnout was huge, and everyone seemed to be having a great time. Thanks again to the Parks and Recreation Department for all their effort and to Councilmember Debbie Weldon. We were treated to a flyover by the F-35 fighter jets. And then today, council attended the community campaign kickoff for the United Way of Yavapai County. And I personally found it helpful to learn about their funding operations and the recipients of their funding on this side of the mountain. And that's all I have.
I just want to take a second to acknowledge, I know we just did this, but acknowledge the entire police department. Over the course of the last month, they have had two officers seriously injured while protecting and serving us, which goes to, again, point out that every day they go out there not knowing what they're going to come across. And in the last month, they've had two that have gone out, put themselves at risk, and come out injured for us. So I'd like to take this minute for us to acknowledge them and say thank you for protecting and serving us every day, because I don't think we know how much every day they go out and put their lives on the line. And this month was a prime example of how much they do that. So if y'all stand with me, give me a round of applause with them, please.
Anyone else?
Madam Mayor, members of council, as Amanda sort of alluded to, last Thursday, we had an all-employee meeting, actually two of them, one in the morning, one in the afternoon, where we took the opportunity to also recognize our Team of the Year, Manager and Employee of the Year for 2024. In addition to that, we also provided an update to them on the budget and some of the primary projects that are underway right now in the city. In addition to that, the other thing I'd like to bring to your attention is that we've been working with our legislative folks down in Phoenix, and we were able to get them in the state's budget this year to appropriate a million dollars to the city for the Main Street Road Project, which is a huge thing. And that's it.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have a proclamation declaring July the month of, as Parks and Recreation Month. Sorry, I'm going to spit this out somehow. Whereas Parks and Recreation is an integral part of communities throughout the country, including the city of Cottonwood; and whereas Parks and Recreation promotes health and wellness, improving the physical and mental health of people who live near parks; and whereas Parks and Recreation promotes time spent in nature, which positively impacts mental health by increasing cognitive performance and well-being and alleviating illnesses such as depression, attention deficit disorders, and Alzheimer's; and whereas Parks and Recreation encourages physical activities by providing space for popular sports, hiking trails, swimming pools, and many other activities designed to promote active lifestyles; and whereas Parks and Recreation is a leading provider of healthy meals, nutrition services, and education; and whereas park and recreation programming and education activities such as out-of-school time programming, youth sports, and environmental education are critical to childhood development; and whereas Parks and Recreation increases a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction; and whereas Parks and Recreation is fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community; and whereas Parks and Recreation is an essential and adaptable infrastructure that makes our communities resilient in the face of natural disasters and climate change; and whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors; and whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month; and whereas the city of Cottonwood recognizes the benefits derived from parks and recreation resources; now therefore be it resolved that I, Ann Shaw, Mayor of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim that July is recognized as Parks and Recreation Month in the city of Cottonwood.
Madam Mayor, we'd like to invite the entire Parks and Rec team that has come here today to receive that proclamation, if you wouldn't mind.
Felicia, Felicia, you've got to stand up. Can they even see you?
Ready, one, two, three.
Thanks.
Okay, next, we have a presentation. The 2025 City Beautification Recognition Award is next. Hi.
I was told it would magically appear. I don't know. Excellent. All right. Wonderful. All right. Well, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, thank you for having me tonight. I'm Clover Pinion with Community Development, and I'm here just to give a short, sweet little presentation about our beautification program. So we started this program, actually, in 2023. So this is the third year that it's been running, and we did it based on our strategic plan. One of our initiatives was to encourage and develop community pride. One of the ways we felt we could do that was by starting this beautification program. So any commercial business that has been in business for at least one year can be nominated. And anyone can nominate, and it can even be self-nomination. Now, the nominations are anonymous. They can choose to provide the information, but what we found is typically they don't, which is fine. And then, so each year, the nominations have been accepted through the whole month of April. We usually put out the public service announcements a couple times before that. And then we usually put it in the, I guess it's the biweekly management report now, just to kind of get the word out that we're accepting nominations. It's a really easy, fillable form that's available online. So, and in all the advertisements we do, there's a link and then a QR code that would, you know, let people go to that webpage to nominate. The winner does receive the public service announcement, which will be going out here just in a couple days. They get a social media shout-out, so on all the city's platforms, they will be recognized. And then they're also awarded here at the city council for July 15th. There were six nominees this year. As you can see, they're in order from highest to lowest, so you can see who won there. So we take an average of the five scores, and then whoever's the highest is the winner overall. On the right there is just an example of the rubrics we used in order to determine who would be the winner this year. As you can see, Spring Hill Suites came out on top, followed by Verdi Plaza, and then Alpha Towing. Some of the others, so Verdi Plaza Apartments was a little bit unique because they just did a huge remodel and a re-landscaping, but because they had been in business, obviously for way longer than a year, we allowed the nomination to stay. So they did come in, you know, pretty close to second, and we're excited to kind of see what that landscape is going to look like in the next year or so. Some of the other ones, the poor Cottonwood Post Office, someone said it was way better than it used to be. So, so kudos to them for doing that. But thank you to, you know, obviously, all the businesses that were nominated and for inspiring a vibrant, a vibrant community. We had five judges this year. One was our Vice Mayor Felicia Coats, and then our council member Bob Marks. Also, our Planning and Zoning Chairwoman Lindsay Mastin, our Community Development Senior Planner Tina Hayden, and then myself. And, da-da-da. So obviously, the winner this year was Spring Hill Suites. They just, their landscaping has just did an amazing job with using native plants, with their groupings, with their ground cover, with their use of color. And it's all over the property. It's in the back, it's on the sides, it's the parking lots. It's not just like a couple few areas. As well, too, there was tons of pictures. I couldn't squeeze them all on here, but they also had, you know, planters with flowers out in front with really vibrant colors and such. Just their use of the rock as well, even their, like, retention basins and such had amazing ground cover and things of that nature. So you can see clearly why they were the winner this year. So we'd just like everybody to check on the City of Cottonwood Community Development page early next year for updates for the 2026 beautification program. We are looking at maybe playing with a couple different ideas of possibly doing like a, like, who could, like, improve their landscaping? Like nominate someone who really deserves it and like, you know, do kind of like a 50/50. Well, you'll get, if you contribute 50%, then you'll get a gift card from, like, say, Verdi Valley Growers to be able to do the rest of your landscaping to improve it. So, because a lot of the smaller mom-and-pops businesses, they're obviously working on trying to pay their employees, so sometimes the poor landscaping falls to the side. And then we're also eventually, maybe someday, wanting to pull in residential, so not just doing commercial businesses, but also having a residential element to the program. So just a couple things we're looking for next year. But that's it for the program. Right now, I'd like to bring up Sarah Gant. She is the General Manager of Spring Hill Suites. So she's going to come up and say a few words, if you'd like, if you're good. If you'd like to introduce yourself for the record.
Hello, I'm Sarah Gant. Nice to meet you all. Hi, everybody. Yeah, I'm very honored to accept this award. This, obviously, I represent the hotel, but if any of you have had the pleasure to meet the Welkers, they are the owners of the hotel. They take great pride in, A, taking care of their hotels and having a beautiful product, right, for the city and for our guests. But I know they would be proud to be mentioned today, so thank you.
Yes, you're welcome. All right, so here's the lovely, beautiful pusk. And then we'll have you take a picture with the mayor. More pictures. Yay. And typically, we just have you come in front. I could say, if everybody could.
Wait for the rest of the council. They're all coming.
Everybody's coming.
Hold that pose.
Hold that pose. I didn't say that. I didn't say that, you did.
All right. Should I just hit the skin? No, that's the wrong button. Sorry. I'll let Alex. All right. Thank you.
Can I just say, Clover, you did a great job leading the effort. As a participant in the process, I found it an easy process and fun, so.
Oh, thank you. Well, you're welcome. Thank you for participating. We really appreciate your time. Yes. Have a great evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next is call to the public. The public may address the council on matters directly relating to city business that are not listed on the agenda during the call to the public by submitting a written request-to-speak form to the city clerk no later than the conclusion of the information reports slash updates portion of the agenda. There is a three-minute timeframe per speaker, and all comments shall be addressed to the council as a whole and not to any member thereof, staff, or audience. The mayor may direct a speaker to stop speaking and leave the podium, or adjourn the meeting if anyone becomes disorderly or uncivil, makes personal attacks against any person or persons, or if the mayor determines that the speaker is speaking about items that are outside the city's legal authority to act. I don't have any call to the public forms, so I'm assuming, there is none. Okay, moving right along then. Approval of minutes of the regular meeting of June 17th, 2025.
Some moves. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next is the consent agenda. The following items are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the council and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or a citizen so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. We have four items as follows. One is consideration and possible approval of the contract for request for qualifications, FY26 APO1, on-call airport planning services. Two, consideration and possible approval of a one-year extension of the professional services agreement with Dibble and Associates Consulting Engineers Incorporated for on-call airport engineering services. Next is Resolution Number 3351, a resolution of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, adopting revised transit, drug, and alcohol testing policy effective June 15th, 2025. July 15th, sorry. Consideration and possible approval of an APS line extension agreement and associated charges for the construction of new electrical distribution facilities for the new lift station number two in an amount not to exceed $62,650. Are there any items that a member of the public or council wishes to pull from the consent agenda for further discussion? Hearing none? I'll ask for a motion to approve.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving into new business. The first thing is presentation selection and approval of a new Visit Cottonwood brand identity logo. Hi, Ms. Lewis.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Tricia Lewis, Tourism and Economic Development Director. I look a little different tonight, but I'm here and I'm in good spirits, so thank you for having me. Yes, so I have some news for you, and I'd love to get some input on a new logo. I just want to give you a little bit of background. Tonight, I'm here to give you an update on things happening with the Visit Cottonwood. That is the tourism side of our house. That is the, that is one of the areas I'm responsible for. And as you may recall, in January, we had the Destination IQ firm that came in and they met with you, and they, they're here and they're doing a fantastic job. I just want to say that I'm very pleased with them, and you're going to be seeing a lot more of the product that we're working on in the projects. I've been, obviously, under the weather a lot, so I haven't been able to come in and do many updates, but I think this is going to be timely, and I look forward to your input tonight. So as I want to reemphasize, the Visit Cottonwood is not the city's logo. This is our tourism, what we call the DMO, the Destination Marketing Organization. Just to backtrack a little bit, I know Council Member Walden, you'll remember this, but when I started here in 2020, the DMO, we'll just call it the DMO, was managed by the Chamber of Commerce, the Cottonwood Chamber of Commerce. And one of the very first tasks that was given to me by the city manager at that time was that we were going to be taking it over as far as the tourism arm of the city and promoting it within the city. So the DMO is wherever the funding source is. So we manage it, we fund it, we used to fund it with the chamber. So we pulled the funding back in, wasn't really popular, but we got through it, and the chamber's thriving now, and we're doing great. Hopefully, you'll see that. So we've made some changes, we've come a long way. Back in 2020 during COVID, I started in April, and that year was obviously very interesting for all of us, April of 2020. I recognize, and we all recognize, that there was a need for us to do an updated logo. It was very similar, the old one was very similar to the Chamber of Commerce. It was very similar. I'm sure you remember. And so we came up with some options, decided to go and went before council, got it approved, as well as the new website. So basically, what I'm trying to say is that we need new tools in the toolbox. That's how I'd probably best explain it. And so tonight, I'm looking for guidance, input, and hopefully a decision on which logo, maybe you've seen it in your packet, will replace the existing Cottonwood logo. This is what I want to present to you. Branding matters, and Cottonwood is evolving. As you can see, that is our logo. I'll show you that in just a moment. But again, since 2020, Cottonwood's Tourism Office has overseen the Destination Marketing Organization known as Visit Cottonwood. We are responsible to manage and promote Cottonwood as a true tourism destination. At that time, and it was approved in early '21, we launched a new destination logo as well as published a new website, which is in existence right now until the next few months. So this is the existing logo that you see now. The logo was approved, as I mentioned, by City Council in early '21. It was and is centered around the heart of Arizona wine country. It has served its purpose, and it is time for a new updated logo. Now considered dated and lacks visibility on light backgrounds, and it's not a dominant logo for Cottonwood. I hear that by many of my tourism stakeholders many times. We also need a more inclusive, versatile, and modern representation of Cottonwood's identity. I'm very proud to say that over the past five years, I've seen Cottonwood grow in very competitive manners as far as what we offer, and Cottonwood's been exposed, and maybe that, that's probably not the right word, but I would say that in a positive sense, that Cottonwood is being known for what a beautiful place this is. I will say that we are very respectful and want to be protective over the quality of life that many of you, many of us consider Cottonwood to be. So this is not an oversaturated market, and we're not trying to be. So we're not being over-aggressive with our branding and our advertising and what we're doing. And that all is going to come at another meeting. Tonight's just about the logo. So just to give you a little background, as you know, 2025 of this year, January, we hired the new DMO agency, and they're great. They were here for four days with an immersion tour. They completed many different conversations. We met with a lot of different tourism stakeholders, we met with you, and they took detailed notes, they took many pictures, and they really tried to capture things that they thought would represent Cottonwood very well. At that time, it was early May, we started putting together some branding, some logo options, because we recognized that that was the first step that we needed to do to update this entire campaign. So we went to our tourism, I have a TAC meeting, the Tourism Advisory Committee. Any of you are welcome to join if you ever want to come to that meeting, by the way. We also opened it up to staff, department heads, the executive team, to see what their input was, that what, you know, obviously, what makes Cottonwood a solid tourism attraction. I will tell you, the difference between the tourism stakeholders and the department heads was very different, and that's what you'll see tonight, is a representation of two different variety of logos. But we've gone through five or six variations of the logo, and we finalized down to two. I will tell you, and I said this to the department heads, executive team, we call it, I guess, is that we're not here to oppress, like, this is not for one person to love it. It's really, excuse me, it's so hard, and it's such an objective process, that it isn't going to please everyone all the time. We have some people in the TAC that don't love these brands, but I feel like this was the best representation of the voices that we heard along the way. So this was an inclusive process, and tonight is ultimately the final decision, and if you, you know, want any of your input is well-received, it will be well-received. So this presentation and this conversation is intended to gain insight and seek input for the new Visit Cottonwood logo, as I've mentioned, to be used on all of our official tourism platforms and to replace the existing logo. So here's the first one. This is, also includes what the scope of the services for the new branding also included a new tagline. We've come up with Savor the Moment. I will tell you that when I was first brought in, I was branded on my forehead that said, "We are the heart of Arizona wine country." Obviously, the wine is very important, it is a very important component of our tourism draw here. This is meant to include that, but we are also trying to expand a little bit more and not be just solely focused on wine. But I will tell you, the Savor the Moment, it's going to be used for Savor the Experience, and there's a lot of different flexibilities. Like I said, I will bring that to you at another time, but that is the tagline we would use for this logo. This was the one, at least the color palette and the logo design, was liked by our TAC members. The colors represent Arizona's vibrant sun, that's what, and then the Verdi Valley Wine, I'll start at the top, the sun, and then the Visit word has the shooting star, because we're going to be focused on our dark-skies community, so we're going to be doing some campaigns on that. Then the bright sun with the other dot on the I. The purple dots, and then the purple Cottonwood is the grapes. That's, you know, obviously have a lot to do with the wine. The purple mountain is Mingus, representing Mingus Mountain. The blue is water for the Verdi, and then the vineyards. I can, I pulled up my jump drive, and I could go through all the variations. It's a long process, and some of the executive team's like, whoa. So, you know, it's a lot, but this is, this is three variations. What I will tell you is where the grapes are, and then the little Cottonwood leaf. Those can go away, or they can be changed out. Those are called elements. This logo is really great. It's a circular one versus the other one, even though the, excuse me, the text is long. When we're looking for various applications like Facebook and other social media components, this one works very well for that. I will tell you that the other one is, this is the second one, and what I mean, the elements is down here in the bottom right-hand corner. Those can be interchanged. This is the one that the staff liked, the department heads really liked this one. They actually liked the one at the very bottom with all of the mountain biking, the hiking, the camping, that kind of. It gets really busy, and it's hard, because I will tell you, this is a huge project, and it's hard to combine everything that makes Cottonwood so great into a tiny little logo. So this is just a logo, but everything else we're going to be doing on the website is going to have so many beautiful pictures and new copy, and it's going to be wonderful. So I will tell you where, again, Savor the Moment, this was liked by the executive team, as I mentioned. It is not ideal for various applications, the other one just because of the circular, but that, we can make it work. This one is fun and focuses on more of the elements. So again, you can choose one of the different variations. One of the, a little bit of feedback I did get from the team last week was that the mountains look a little too, you know, like a volcano. So we can fix that. Any of this stuff can be adjusted. That's why I'm here tonight, is I really want your input. It is nice to see bright colors. It is nice to see a variation of, you know, just different things to look at, because five years, typically, the industry standard is five to seven years is time for a new brand. So we're probably due at the city's logo, but I'm not even going to touch that, because I don't even want to deal with that one. We're just doing the tourism side right now. So your input matters, and I am here to listen, and if you'd like me to go back to the slides, I don't know if you've had time to digest these, but I really want to hear what you have to say, and I'm hopeful that we can get direction, or I can get direction, because this branding project leads into a brand-new website that's being worked on now, and that, and obviously, in the social media and a lot of other materials that we're working on. So, but that's not a rush, this is just for you to digest, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
So Ms. Lewis, I wondered if you could expand a bit more on your, the prior slide, where you had a bullet point that said, "Not ideal for various applications." Is that a big deal? I mean, how, I mean, are we talking about a minority of potential uses, or is this option two really not going to work for a majority of purposes?
That's a great question, Vice Mayor. Actually, it's just a, it was just a mention from the team that because it is a longer, more horizontal logo, it might be hard for us to put in like a Facebook circle. But the team has told me, the designer has said that they will make it work. I don't know how they're going to do that, but, I mean, those are the options, obviously. All the social media platforms have a really small, you know, logo. So that's what I meant by not very, not ideal for all the various applications. And this one also because it is a lot of darker images. When it's black and white, you may not see, you know, other things. But again, the other one is kind of dark, too. So I really feel like these are a variety of differences, but the other one is probably more ideal if we're using it on social media. But that's just my take.
From just a graphic and pleasing standpoint, I like option two better, and part of the reason I think I like it better is because the river element, which is so important to our city, is very prominent and very clear. Until you identified that there's a river element in option one, I didn't see it.
Okay.
It looked like just, you know, another stratum on our horizon. It didn't look like the river to me.
Yeah, it looks, that's what I was thinking also. It looks more like a lake than a river. But I mean, if you just kind of, you know, reverse or adjust the direction, you know, where, kind of take what you have in the option two, and, you know, and change that, you know, in option one, where the river is kind of coming toward you, and it's kind of got a little twist to it, if you can put that in option one, I think that would.
I mean, I think both are good, but I'm a practical person by nature, and so I think it's important that we be practical and pragmatic about this, you know, that we want a logo that works in as many applications as possible.
Right.
I love Savor the Moment. It's fabulous. It says everything. And I'm going to go for the first logo because it draws my eye. The second one, you're kind of doing one of these, I mean, in my brain. And I think it just stands out better, in my opinion. That's all.
Thank you.
How was, how was that tagline? How did you work to that tagline, Savor the Moment? How did you arrive to that?
It was part of the process of doing all the different variations of the logo. It was part of when the team was here, we were trying to think about all the different things that, I mean, we sat and had a brainstorming session when the team was here, and they came up with all these different ideas. We were trying, we highlighted all of different, how do I say it? I don't want to say taglines, because we were trying to incorporate the wine industry, but without it being just the wine. So I had come up with Savor the Experience, and we wanted to be a little bit bigger and more broad to say Savor the Moment. They had a bunch of variations, and I could send you that, if you'd like to see the variations.
Personally, I like Savor the Experience. Savor the Moment, I mean, this is me.
What we're going to be doing is taking Savor the Moment, it's going to be changed out with all the different, like, Savor the Experience, if it's the outdoor. And it can, the tagline for Savor the Moment will be on the logo, but... the tagline for Savor the Moment will be on the logo. But when we're using some other descriptions on our new Visit Cottonwood website, Savor is part of the messaging, but it's going to change out with the experience and Savor the, I mean, there's a variety of different things. I'm not, I don't have all of them right here. But it's really to capture, I guess, with images, when it comes to, you know, making that people want to come to Cottonwood to savor whatever it might be. And we had to include the wine in some ways without being too direct. Sorry, Paula. But, I mean, I can show you a variation of all of them that came up out. This was just the one that was picked between the tourism group, and then I kind of shared it with the department heads.
Yeah, I think if you can do the, the river in the first one somehow, and make it more prominent, that, that'd be great.
You guys would laugh if you saw the variety. I'm going to have them on a Dropbox. Should I show them, Tom?
You don't need to. We trust you.
I like the tagline. And I do like the second option, because as soon as I saw it, it really said something about Cottonwood to me. I agree that the, maybe the mountains are a little too spiky for, you know, to represent Mingus. But, but I love the, the river, and it recalls other, other city logos, that both past and present. And I like that. You know, I like it that it, it brings, it brings a kind of continuity, but it's, it's distinct. I, I like it. And, and down on the corner there, where it says "Visit," and there are all these little activities going on, and it looks like people are on the road, that's pretty cool. I like it that you can, that you can do that and bring that kind of focus to that particular logo.
I appreciate that. And you're right on, Mayor, because that is the one that the executive team liked the best. And then when I brought them back of this other one, they're like, even Chief Foodenball said, "Where's the one that we saw last week?" So this is exactly what you just said, is exactly what the team thought as well. They liked that one the best. And, I mean, we can make it work, Vice Mayor, to answer your question. We can make it work for other various applications. This is, is obviously meant to be something that we all feel represents Cottonwood. And that we, when we look at it, we can, we can, like, we can kind of, we can relate to it. And also, another point you just brought up is, when they were, the developer, the designer was putting this together, she put, and I have it on my, another file, but all the different variations of destination logos around the state. And these, this one and the first one are very competitive. And I will tell you, I'm very comfortable that this is going to be a very dominant logo for Cottonwood. We are going to stand out amongst the state, is what I'm saying. We started out, and some people didn't like it, but it was the outline of the state of Arizona. And it said, "Visit Cottonwood." And it was cool. It was all the different colors of variations. And we had some people that didn't like that. But I liked it. It was kind of bold. So what I'm saying is, we've come a long way. We could be here all day and all night. I could bug you and bore you with details on the logo for a lot. But I tried to keep it just simplified into the best of my ability for represented, representatives of the tourism industry and the people that we see, that I deal with, and then obviously our, our executive team. So.
And I have to say that I preferred option two. Also, I just, it just feels comfortable. It feels like Cottonwood.
Okay, that's great.
Out of all the ideas, and I'm just, I'm just throwing this out there.
Okay.
What if you took "Visit" off, and a little, I don't know, a little bit bolder underneath Cottonwood? Savor the Visit. Just move "Visit" down. Instead of Savor the Moment, Savor the Visit. I just...
I could ask them to put something like that out there.
Well, I'm going to, I'm not like the Vice Mayor. I'm not very practical most of the times. I don't know, I think they both, I like them both, actually. I don't know. I can do number two. I'm good with that. But I would have the same challenge with the mountains. Because coming from the Valley of the Sun, that reminds me of Australia Mountain, and the Australia Mountain.
I don't know why they got that, honestly. I don't know. But, okay.
I mean, that's the first thing. Coming from Phoenix, that's what I imagine. So other than that, I like them both.
Okay, thank you. Is that everybody's input?
I really like the one in the lower right there.
So that might be it. We're just might have to go with that one down there. That would make everybody happy. Everyone in this room happy. Paula, do you like it?
Just, just need to add one element.
She's one of my important stakeholders, Paula. She came to support me tonight, because when Paula's happy, the world is happy. You guys know that?
If you can squeeze in one more activity on that, that'd be great.
I know. Look at the, the circle that's down there. We have fishing, photography, eating, grapes, stargazing.
Still missing one.
Tree. Wow. Oh, shoot. I forgot about that.
How about that? I didn't even need to say it.
Thank you. Okay, so if we do number two, is everybody going to be happy with that? The bottom, it says number one, but the second option.
I'm happy. Yes.
Out of curiosity, who were some of the tourism stakeholders who were involved?
Paula, the haunted group.
Okay.
Many of the hotel owners, Colt Grill, Debbie Garrison. Who else is in the TAC? Who else? Oples and M. We have a long list. And then a lot of the hotel, Anna Mae, Cory, The Chamber. We just had a meeting today. So a variety, and they're not ever short of telling us what they think. And so I have a really critical group. And, I mean, I mean that in a nice way. They're not ever, they don't ever hold back on their opinions of things. So, and I will tell you, just to tell you all, I just want to say thank you for your support, because I don't know if you've noticed, but our social media has been doing very well. We hired a new social media manager, or at least Destination IQ did. And for the first time in my five years, we've been getting compliments on our social media. So I'm very pleased, and I'm very excited for the direction that we're going. And a lot of this is because of your support to me and for my team. And I will tell you, it's so nice to have a team. And during my cancer treatment, this is one of my little projects that keeps me going. It's a really fun project. And I hope that all of you feel proud and pleased to be a part of this, this DMO, and, and for us to promote Cottonwood in the way that we can, because there's a lot to offer. And we're just telling the story. And I think we're doing a great job with that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Tricia.
I think you should be proud of the fact that you brought us something that we agreed on and all about.
I can't believe it. You guys are all in agreement. That was so nice.
Things ever.
I'm sure there's been a tremendous amount of...
Knockdown, drag-out.
No. I'm sure there's been a tremendous amount of work put in. Was there, was there anybody amongst the stakeholder group who were, like, strongly disagreed with any of this, went storming out of the room? Or was there pretty much a...
She didn't storm out of the room, but...
It was about the colors.
Yeah. She really liked the first round. But no, nobody was really mean to me. They just were very vocal, as usual.
No, not mean, just like...
I'm joking.
Just grumpy.
Paula's the only one that told me she didn't like some of the variations. But I think she's happy now. So, and I would like to thank her.
Are you happy, Paula?
I think it's busy, but I'm happy. I like the first one better, because it's implied. And I think that's a little more interesting. But I do appreciate what the directions got into a lot of work. And I appreciate Tricia's dedication to doing this stuff.
Yeah.
I do, you know, feel that if you take the first logo, and you just change the direction of the river, where it looks like a river, it, you know, it would make a difference. And the mountains, you know, the mountains look more correct to Cottonwood.
Well, the, the plan has always been to change the mountains on that number two.
Oh, yeah. We were always going to...
I think the entire director's staff said, "Take the mountain from the first one and put it into the second one."
Yes. I just haven't done that with the...
I think they, they likened it to Picacho Peak.
I know. Yeah, that's what I, I don't know where she got it.
Graphic design nightmare to create an outline of a mountain. It's pretty easy.
Yeah. She can just buffer off the side there. But the fun thing is, if we go with this one, which sounds like we're going to, these elements, in addition to Pickleball, can be added at any time, which could happen. And you might just see it out there, you know? It might be different variations. We have a bicyclist, and a camper, and a hiker. And we might have a fisherman, and a photographer, or whatever. So those are different elements we could shift out. Yeah.
Tricia, we could just put a pickle in one of the O's in Cottonwood.
Bob's going to do a silhouette for you, so you can put his silhouette Pickleball in the O. What do you think?
I think this is fun, and I thank you. I just, it's a fun part of it. And, and you should be proud, because we're doing good things. And I will be coming back to you with more, more projects and more updates. So thank you so much. And I can't believe you all agreed. This is great. So is this an official vote, or...
Yeah, we have to make a motion. So I move to approve the selection of option two of the updated Visit Cottonwood logo as presented today, to reflect the city's growth and increased visibility since the 2020 branding update.
I'll second that.
Okay. Can we do a roll call vote on that, please?
Councilmember DeWilles?
Yes.
Councilmember Dowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Mosley?
Yes.
Councilmember Weldon?
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Coats?
Yes.
And Mayor Shaw?
Yeah.
Thank you. And that motion carries. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Loos.
Yes, appreciate it. That's all I have.
Okay, next under new business is presentation and public hearing for ordinance 742. This is zoning dash 25 dash 001, a text amendment to zoning ordinance, section 310, historic preservation ordinance.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilwoman Tina Hayden with Community Development, presenting ordinance 742, also known as case number ZO25001. It's a text amendment on our section 310 historic preservation ordinance. On October of last year, city council, the previous city council directed staff to clarify the appeals process within this section, taking a look at it. Staff did observe that there were other areas that needed some updating, some ambiguous code, sentence structure, items like that. On February 10th of this year, city council held a joint meeting with our Historic Preservation Commission, and they expressed that the current requirements within section 310 are satisfactory. So our text amendments are intended to maintain those current requirements and processes, clarify intent, streamline processes, remove reiterative language, and increase readability and flow. So we're not changing anything, but we're changing everything. This is an outline of the current section 310. Again, we are moving stuff around, combining items. So I just wanted to give a visual. This historic preservation waiver here is actually being relocated here. It's actually going to be retitled. We are combining these three sections H, I, and M, under certificate of appropriateness. There was a lot of redundant language in there. And we are also combining subsections K and N, again, for redundant language. This will be the new updated outline. This item here, removal, that was the historic preservation waiver previously. The other thing I wanted to note is that you will know that we no longer have our definitions in the subs, in this section, because we came to you previously and moved everything into our section 201. Putting the outline change details into words, these bullet points do align with the staff report, that summary list. So again, subsection B definitions is removed. We have a new subsection 310D general establishing all of our public hearing notification procedures. That was reiterative language throughout the subsections. So we just put it into, under one roof there. The historic preservation waiver, again, is being retitled, removal. We're consolidating subsections H, I, and M into certificate of appropriateness, consolidating subsections K and N into finding of hardship for certificate of appropriateness. And we have a new subsection 310K refiling, indicating a six-month ban on refiling of similar applications. Again, this bullet point still corresponds with the staff report. This is a summary of the text amendments. You'll notice that historic preservation district and historic preservation overlay district are used synonymously throughout. We wanted to remove the term overlay, because the definitions in 201 indicate historic preservation district as a zoning overlay district, and historic district as a historic district recognized on the National Register. We also wanted to clarify that any indication of manager actually referred to the Community Development Director, and not the city manager. Clarifying language that the commission is the Historic Preservation Commission, because in this same section, the Planning and Zoning Commission is also referenced. We established that all commission decisions are appealable to council, clarifying and outlining those processes for certificate of appropriateness, finding of hardship, historic preservation waivers, and landmarking. We clarified criteria for approval for certificates of appropriateness. This was another item that we had to consolidate different subsections together. Established uniform public hearing notification processes, that six-month ban on refiling, and formatting and grammar. So this is the timeline for the ordinance itself. I would like to point out that March and April, we did have multiple discussions with the Historic Preservation Commission about the text amendment. On May 28th, they made a recommendation of approval to our Planning and Zoning Commission. I realize that I have the date wrong here. So June 5th, sorry, I do apologize. I misread June for July. So on June 16th, our Planning and Zoning Commission made a recommendation of approval to the city council. We're here today on the 15th for a vote in ordinance 742. If this is adopted by council, it will take effect August 14th. And that concludes my presentation. Ready for any questions you have? And again, this is presentation and public hearing. So take it away.
Okay. I, I will now open the floor for the public hearing. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address council regarding this item? Okay, hearing none. I'll close the public hearing and move on to the ordinance section. Ordinance number 742, zoning dash 25 dash 001, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, declaring the document titled 2025 amended zoning ordinance, section 310, historic preservation ordinance, as a public record, adopting the same by reference, and amending the zoning ordinance of the city of Cottonwood as set forth therein, providing for severability and providing for penalties. Is there any discussion of this item by council?
Yes. Ms. Hayden, I had a question. And it stems from my attendance at last October's council meeting. And I heard from the public some expression of frustration. And it had to do with the length of time that the HPC and the staff take to review and take to act on the applications. And there are many reasons for that. And I think the text amendment that you're, that you're putting forth here now will clarify the process and expedite things a little bit. That said, I, I still think that just as there are timeline metrics for the applicant, I think there should similarly be timeline metrics for the HPC and staff. So in my interaction with acting city manager, Mr. Whitmer, he made some suggestions about an approach. I'm not particular to what the specific approach is. But I personally feel that there should be at least some goals for, for timing, that the HPC and staff should be acting within. So I don't know how my fellow council members feel about that. But that's, that was my feeling after listening to the comments at last October's meeting.
My only question would be, what, what, in your opinion...
My only question would be what, in your opinion, your opinion is the reason for the time delay?
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmember Weldon. Within the zoning ordinance, the only time that we specify timeframes is when it's mandated by state law. Anything else, we typically adhere to department policy about the timely processing of applications. In reference to the item that appeared at council last year, timeline-wise, updating that appeals process, and then bestowing the powers to council to issue a certificate of appropriateness, that will cut some time down. As far as processes for staff, we can explore looking at our policies, but our intent is to get our applicants to the next available meeting. We serve as a project manager, so to say. So it's not our intent to delay because we understand that there is a dollar amount attached to any delay.
So Ms. Hayden? You're saying that there are guidances or directions within your department for applications in general in terms of timing for response?
Correct, and I would say that for any items going to our Planning and Zoning Commission and our Historic Preservation Commission, we do have a five-week window. That's, so five weeks prior to the meeting date is our submittal deadline, which does allow for some back and forth between staff and the applicant to make corrections to submittal items.
But wasn't that part of the issue, was it had to go to historic preservation, and then it had to go to planning and zoning?
And they only meet once a month, and?
Right.
Yeah, I thought that was part of that challenge, so, but I thought we talked about combining it or some, I can't remember exactly what it was, but didn't we talk about combining them or like front-loading it or something? I thought that's what it was, I just can't remember. Anyway, I would be under the same thought process as the Vice Mayor is, something to speed it up, because you and I both know the speed of government sometimes, not intentionally, it just happens, like, you know, for instance, the two, going through the two. So I think that we should find a way to streamline it as well.
Thank you, councilmembers. One item that staff has been exploring is moving the meeting date for the Historic Preservation Commission so that it is before Planning and Zoning Commission, because in some cases, certificate of appropriateness is required and design review with the Planning and Zoning Commission. So have, and Planning and Zoning Commission will look at staff and say, what did the Historic Preservation Commission say? So we really want to do the HPC meeting first, and so if we were to relocate the meeting date, we might be able to get an applicant to both meetings in the same month. So that is something that we will continue, sorry, to explore as far as availability of our commissioners.
Or minimally, hold a placeholder in Planning and Zoning's agenda, so at least it's there, right? Like, so like, okay, this is coming up, let's hold a space for it in the agenda so we can streamline if we need to, you know, and if we need to, we can drop it off, but, because I know that ends up being the challenge, is, oh, we didn't put notice out. So I think if you at least put a placeholder out there and said, hey, we know this is going through HPC, let's put it on Planning and Zoning as well so that it's, if it does, if all goes well in HPC, there it is.
Council, another idea would be to, so when we were doing this text amendment, you guys expressed satisfaction with the current regulations. We could explore what certificate of appropriateness items go to the commission and what's done administratively. That administrative process is a quicker timeline than doing a public hearing and scheduling for Historic Preservation Commission. The guidelines are pretty rigid about what can be done administratively, including one of them being change of paint color with essentially the same color being allowed to be done administratively, whereas minor change colors, we actually have a project that, they currently have a dusty rose color on the exterior, but they're wanting to change it to white, and the verbiage in the code indicates that that has to go to their commission. So that is something that in a upcoming text amendment, I don't know if you want to table this or, and have us make those changes now, or we can make those changes at a later time, kind of allowing more administrative review.
It would be my preference that we go ahead and adopt the ordinance now, and then we can revisit this issue of minor changes that can be dealt with administratively rather than going to the commission. We can stick something in later. We can create an amendment or a point of policy later on.
One additional thing I wanted to add that Acting City Manager had brought to my attention that I didn't appreciate previously was some of the timeline for the process is owned by the applicant even after they submit it to you because oftentimes the application is not complete and correct. So that's something else that somehow, I think, needs to be spelled out clearly to say, you know, until you receive a complete and correct application, the clock really doesn't start. It's not really within your responsibility until you receive a complete and correct application. So I think that's another thing. But to the mayor's point, I think those things, I'm okay with addressing those later.
And is that not in the code? It seems like there's some portion of this that addresses the responsibility of the owner of the building or structure or whatever it is, but you're saying that's not there?
If it's not there, please make sure it is there, that's all.
I just want to say, unlike when Mr. Blazer was here, I actually read through all of the red lines and all of that stuff, and I really appreciated the changes to the language, the clarity, and even the grammatical shifts were, actually made the whole thing, as you were designing it to do, making it more readable. So I appreciated the quality of the changes, so, thank you. Okay, anything further?
Well, when I read this here on page four, it says, "The staff will review the application and prepare a report for the Historic Preservation Commission to consider at a regular scheduled meeting, which must concur before landmark designation." This is particularly about that, "but it must be within sixty days of the Community Development Department receiving the completed application." So it does set that in sixty days you have to then move on, move on that, right? All right.
Okay, good, thank you.
All right.
Okay, anything else? If not, I'll accept a motion. To adopt the ordinance, is written? It's okay, take your time. We're doing great.
Can't we just say, adopt the, the ordinance as written?
Excuse me, Mayor and Council, yes, or you could say, so moved, or adopt the ordinance number?
So moved, that's it.
I'll second.
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Okay, Councilmember DeWilles?
Yes.
Councilmember Dowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Mosley?
Yes.
Councilmember Weldon?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Coats?
Yes.
And Mayor Shaw?
Yes.
And that motion carries.
And I'll now read the ordinance into the record. Ordinance number seven four-two, zoning dash twenty-five dash zero zero one, an ordinance of the mayor and City Council of the City of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, declaring the document titled Twenty Twenty-Five Amended Zoning Ordinance Section Three Ten Historic Preservation Ordinance as a public record, adopting the same by reference, and amending the zoning ordinance of the City of Cottonwood as set forth therein, providing for severability and providing for penalties. Okay, next is discussion and possible direction to staff regarding the Old Town Master Plan.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council. I'm Scott Ellis, Community Development Director. Tricia got you guys all to agree, so hopefully I can keep that same momentum going. So we're here tonight at council's request to talk about Old Town Master Plan. This has been kind of thrown about for a few years now, since about 2018. There was a small proposal that year when we got our CDBG monies or project proposals to do something, some sort of plan with the activity park down there. So a bunch of questions kind of go with this. What is Old Town? I think we all have an idea of what we think Old Town is, but if you ask five different people, you might get five different answers. What should Old Town be? What do we want it to look like? Where do we want it to go in the future? And then, one of the bigger ones that I think is on everybody's mind right now is what can and should be done with city-owned buildings if we move into a central city hall. What should be done with the Old Town Activity Park, and what options get us there? So that's kind of why we're looking to do this plan, is to get a lot of these questions answered, get input from a bunch of stakeholders, make sure we maintain that unique historic, cultural, and economic character. The plan's essential for preserving that, promote revitalization, plan for walkability, traffic flow, parking, and wayfinding. We're just wrapping up our parking plan, that'll be presented to you next month. That can be incorporated into this to kind of help guide that. Get input from all the stakeholders that we possibly can. It's, I mean, picture kind of a miniature general plan, I guess, if you will. So get input from council, from Planning and Zoning Commission, from Historic Preservation Commission, Old Town Association, visitors, residents, business owners, so on, anybody you can think of. Of course, that's, if they're willing to come out, join us for meetings that we would hold, just like we did with the general plan, and provide that information, do a survey, like we've done with a lot of other plans, a lot of other things. Given that we have an official designation of the historic district, which is the best way to describe it, from bridge to bridge in Old Town, so from just about Willard Street to around the corner from Poches, but realistically, I think a lot of people would agree that Old Town kind of starts over here at Tenth Street and goes basically to Kinder Heights Road or the city limits, right there with Clarkdale, just a little bit further. So we look at the plan encompassing from Tenth Street to about Kinder Heights, and that would include not just Main Street, it would include the residential areas as well. What do we want to see in there? For some unknown reason, there's one block east of Main Street and one block west of Main Street that's essentially residential, but it's all zone commercial. I don't know when or why it predates a lot of, probably goes back to when the city was first incorporated and had zoning established. So we could look at all of that, you know, does it make sense to maintain that or keep that, or what do we want to do? That vacant area just a little bit further to the west, when you get on that very north side, kind of west of Cactus Street that we just brought to you with some agreements and stuff with Mr. Lindner, you know, what could go best in there? His plan will help look at all of that. The goal is definitely to have a usable plan that provides achievable options. So we don't want any pie-in-the-sky options that, you know, is just not realistic, as nice as it would be, city would have to win Powerball $200 million to get there. We don't, we don't want that. We want, this is what we could potentially do, knowing that we're a small town. So this kind of a visual of that area in the red here, basically Tenth Street right here, like I said, just kind of going around everywhere here, all the way up to, and this is Kinder Heights right here. So we can expand it to the city boundary. We have that new, where Gercetta Ranch Road comes out on the Main Street, and we have Gray Fox, which is a newer subdivision up there. Couple smaller vacant pieces of land, we could absolutely include those, this is just kind of conceptual right now. As you know, the general plan does talk about Old Town, talks about a lot of what I just said, you know, what do we want to, what do we want to do? Keep that small-town, old-town charm, the historic nature of it, the walkability, the lighting, the signage, again, the city-owned buildings, what can we do to revitalize the Old Town Activity Park? Parking, I know that's a big one that a lot of people talk about, streetscapes, and so even the general plan that was just approved last year talks about getting a master plan for Old Town to help with that. So along with those questions, I think probably the second biggest question is, what would council like to see? Just to let you know as well, we did put out for a grant to help fund this, so that did require somewhat of a scope of work, but, and I put the copy of that in your packets, it's not the same scope of work that we would put out for an RFP if we don't get that grant. And Ryan Bigelow's here, he can talk a little bit more about that, because him and Heather Rowe put that together and submitted that, and I do believe we could find out next month if we get that grant or not. But in the meantime, we did ask for some money in the budget, which council is, seems to be good with. It just sounds like you guys wanted to give some input on what that scope might look like when we get to that point. So with that, any questions, comments, concerns from council on this?
My first thought is, I would think that the Merkin Hill would be part of Old Town, only because it was traditionally part of it. It was the Masonic Lodge, wasn't it?
Yes.
So it, to me, that would be part of Old Town just as well. And Tricia's gonna love me for this one. I think we need bathrooms on the south side of, no, I think we, I think we do.
Right here, public restroom.
Here we go. I do think we need something on that south side, but I also don't want to overdo it because I love Old Town the way it is. I love the music in the market. I love that park where my wife and I go down and listen to music and watch people dance and just hang out, and I don't want, I personally wouldn't want to see that park go away, because I think that that really contributes to Old Town. And it's just like Clarkdale, when you go to Clarkdale, it's the gazebo, right? Like, that's what draws it. So I think that we need to stay true to our roots, right, and not lose that. So I would be, in my humble opinion, I would be against getting rid of, you know, just demolishing it, making the whole thing a parking lot. I think that we lose.
No.
I think we lose Old Town if you lose that park and that kind of stuff, but that's just my, I enjoy Old Town, I like to walk it, and to me, it feels like Old Town right now, so I wouldn't want it to change too much more than that.
That would be a disaster and completely unsupportable. I don't, I don't know how we would accomplish such a horror. No, I, my focus, my interest really is specifically the activity park and the environs, and what to do with city buildings that are no longer occupied as we move out. Those are the questions that I first want to focus on. I don't want to worry about the whole of I don't want to worry about the whole of Old Town, including residential areas, that what are we going to do about that? I don't know. But I know, I know of things that we can do with the city buildings and with the activity park to make them better, more accessible, just, you know, create a wonderful city center there. And, you know, I have some ideas about that, and I want an opportunity to talk about that somewhere other than just in, as a council meeting. I want to take part, you know, in committee discussions and put some ideas together for, you know, for what we can do. But as I say, my focus is, I think Main Street's great the way it is right now. I don't think there's anything much we can or need to do with Main Street itself. I think it's just, you know, the area there where the basketball courts and the city buildings are and the activity park behind, the real questions are, how do we navigate this considering where we are with historic preservation as a district? You know, what do we do with these buildings?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, Council, you know, there's that beautification aspect of it too, not to say that Old Town's not beautiful, especially in the summer nights, if we get, you know, the sun going down, like this time of day is about perfect. I think the only thing that makes it better is a storm in the background. And then, Councilmember Dowell, if I could, ask you a question back on your comments regarding the park. Are you saying, I mean, obviously you don't want it going away, but revitalization of it make it, like the mayor said, more inviting a little bit, some more improvements to it, that kind of thing, but it's still there, it's still that community gathering space?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. I mean, revitalization would really work, it's just, how does that look? I just, I would hate to see it eliminated.
Yeah, and I don't think that's-
If it needs to be restructured, cool, but I don't, that's, to me, Old Town.
Yeah, and we'd focus this plan on not taking away what's there, but how can we improve even more on what is there? That's what our goal would be on this.
Yeah.
This would be a living document, right? I mean, this is like, here's the master plan, it'll be updated, it will be revised as necessary as we complete different work. I just want to clarify what the zone or the scope is, because in the scope document, it says the project geography is North Main Street between Gercetta Ranch Road and 8 Street. This, it obviously sounds like we're flexible on what this is, but it would be good to have some surety on what the scope is, or the definition of Old Town.
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Marks, we can absolutely play with this. This was just kind of a, in generalized, when a lot of people, like I said, you ask five different people, you get five different answers on where Old Town starts, where it stops. We can absolutely reduce this, take out a bunch of the residential, focus more on the Main Street corridor, wherever you want that to start, whether it is 8th Street, 10th Street, or even move it in a little bit further. We know that this property down here has an approved project on it. Unfortunately, they haven't moved forward with it yet, and, I mean, that's a number of years old. We are actually working on contacting all of these developers who have approved projects and finding out their status and when they think they might, if ever, get started. So, you know, knowing that something might come in here and that's going to be developed, you know, we very easily can move that boundary, move that scope to bring it in more, and not necessarily put in those residential areas that, yeah, you're right, you know, be a long time before anything ever changes with those.
At least judging from my house.
I'm really happy to see this. Thank you for bringing this to us. This is great. And I appreciate what the mayor has said, as well as Councilmember Marks. I, like the mayor, have heard a lot of citizen input and interest and passion about what happens to the Old Town Activity Park, the club, community clubhouse, that whole area. You know, it has so much more potential. At the same time, you know, I think we could, you know, broaden beyond that particular area, because I think this is going to be a forward-looking document, right? And it's like, what do we want this district to be years down the road? So I think we may need to broaden beyond that area. But I think the area that personally I believe really needs the attention is what the mayor was saying in terms of, you know, the clubhouse and the Old Town Activity Park. So, and on the subject of that, in the scope of work, it was really specific on the nature of the changes. You know, it said, "Develop concept plan and project scoping for open space park at the southeast corner of Main and Pima at the site of current city hall buildings and replace existing open space with parking." So, as you've been saying, Mr. Ellis, if we could just kind of keep that open when we, you know, do a RFP or whatever, just to say, we're interested in an Old Town Activity Park, better utilization of our clubhouse, and leave it to the stakeholders to provide the input on what it is that those areas should be.
That wording did raise a concern for me. I kind of, wait, wait, what?
Yeah, because it was very specific.
Yeah.
And it's like, no, we don't want to direct them. I think we need to hear from the stakeholders as to what they want that area to be. So, question for you, Mr. Ellis, you mentioned the grant. Is work on this going to be gated by the grant? Or are you planning to, assuming positive feedback from the council tonight, are you planning to move ahead with this?
Madam Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, so, the grant is kind of an extra, I guess you could say, if we get that, we use that money to do this master plan. If not, we did ask for money in the budget to move forward with it even without the grant.
Okay.
So either way, we should be moving forward with it.
Moving forward with it, okay. Perfect. Thank you.
In the way of a mini summary, I agree with everything that's been said, and this is a, this is a plan, this is not, it's a master plan, that's what it is. And you could certainly do it in phases, but there is, there is no doubt room for beautification in Old Town, and even in the housing. You look at several communities, small communities, like maybe ours, that they're spectacular, and everybody's drawn to the Old Town. And then, we don't want to keep people out of the other part of Cottonwood as well, but there's always room for improvement, and so I'm looking for spectacular. And the park down there needs quite a bit of improvement. And, so I'm in agreement, I'm all for it, in phases.
Yeah, this is going to take a little time. I don't think this is going to all happen overnight.
Right, and Madam Mayor, we definitely ask for, you know, kind of a top priority. You know, what is the biggest issue that we can actually accomplish or fix, or what's the biggest goal that we can accomplish with the master plan? Kind of do like a priority list in it, have whoever ends up doing it kind of highlight, this is what you should do first, this is what you should work on next. So we can absolutely make it goal-oriented and achievable.
I'll be glad to talk about it anywhere, anytime.
Good.
Do you need it tonight?
What's that?
Where to start?
Oh, no, this is just for council feedback, so there's nothing to approve tonight. Like I said, we're going to move forward with it anyways, just anything council specifically would like us to consider when the time comes to draft that RFP and that more detailed scope of work.
So is that something council would have the opportunity to see, is the scope of work? I mean, there's what you included in the package, which I was fine with, except for that one mention of the park that was a little too specific. But other than that, I was fine with the scope of work.
Yeah, Madam Vice Mayor, we can absolutely let council have a look at it prior to sending it out officially when we get that draft, I think. Like I said, Ryan told me that we'll find out next month about the grant. We'll wait and see what happens then. If we don't, then we'll get moving on what that scope looks like, what that RFP looks like. The money for the, for the master plan outside of the grant is allocated for the third quarter, which would be about perfect, starting January 1st. By the time we find out about the grant, we write up a new scope if we need to, send out an RFP, look through the submittals, do all of that, we'll be looking at probably, starting with a consultant towards the end of the year. We wouldn't get invoicing until that third quarter anyway, so definitely something we'll move forward on over the next several months to get it going.
Madam Mayor, members of council, we can definitely bring it back to you when we have an RFP and a scope of work finalized, just to get your input, to see if you want to add or modify or change it in any way, shape, and form before we actually put it out on the street. So, definitely come back and do a real mini presentation again on where we're at, present the scope of work to you, and get your input at that point in time before we go out.
Thank you.
Yeah. I'd like, yeah, I'd like for it to be fairly defined first, where do we start and where do we go from that point? And here, we do have variables that are currently up in the air, and we can't necessarily answer that right now here today, but we'll work on it.
Right, and Madam Mayor, Council, as Mr. Whitmer just said, you know, when we bring that back, we can bring back a couple options for what that range, that, you know, how far out do we want to go, what do we want to include, what we don't? And that's definitely something, I think, at least personally for me, it helps to visualize it like this, so we bring you options on what that would look like visually, what those boundaries would look like for that master plan, I think that would be very helpful.
Yeah. Good.
All right.
Okay, any other comments? Are we good? Thanks so much, Mr. Ellis.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item is a public hearing on the final budget for fiscal year 2025-26. So I will now open the floor for the public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to address council regarding the final budget? Anyone from the public? Seeing none, I'll ask that we continue on.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Kirsten Lindon, the Financial Services Director for the City of Cottonwood. We are going to hopefully adopt the final budget for fiscal year 25-26. I think we need to go into a special meeting to do that, so I will let you-
Okay.
-make that.
Okay. As defined by law, we're going to do, either adopt or not adopt, within the framework of the special session. So, would one of you like to propose a motion to go into special session?
I'll propose to go into a special meeting for consideration and possible action to adopt the final budget for fiscal year 2025-26.
I'll second it.
Okay, roll call.
Councilmember DeWelles?
Yes.
Councilmember Dowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Mosley?
Yes.
Councilmember Weldon?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Coats?
Yes.
And Mayor Shaw?
Yes.
And that motion carries?
We are now in special session.
So, this budget, the final budget, is exactly the same as the tentative budget. There was no, there were no changes made during the time period between when the tentative budget was adopted. And the final budget, it is a total budget of $172,885,373. It includes a lot of capital projects, and there is some, a cost of living adjustment for employees and a wage adjustment on their anniversary. There are four new employee positions that we are adding. There are some reclassifications. There are also some other changes in health insurance benefits. And all those items have been discussed and presented before, so if you have any questions on anything, I am open for questions, otherwise I am looking for the adoption of the final budget.
Okay. Are there any further comments or questions regarding the budget? If not, yes.
I move to approve Resolution number 3350, approving the city's proposed fiscal year 2025-26 final budget as presented and to establish the city's fiscal year 2025-26 expenditure limitation at $172,885,373.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember DeWelles?
Yes.
Councilmember Dowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Mosley?
Yes.
Councilmember Weldon?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Coats?
Yes.
And Mayor Shaw?
Yes.
And that motion carries?
Thank you.
May I read the resolution into the record? Hang on a second. Okay, this is Resolution number 3350, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, adopting the final budget for fiscal year 2025-26 and establishing an expenditure limitation. Okay, next I need a motion to come out of special session.
I'll make a motion to come out of special session.
Second.
Councilmember DeWelles?
Yes.
Councilmember Dowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Mosley?
Yes.
Councilmember Weldon?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Coats?
Yes.
And Mayor Shaw?
Yes.
And that motion carries?
Okay. Okay, next, resuming the regular meeting, next is consideration and possible action to approve the purchase agreements for the acquisition of up to two properties for the purposes of constructing or improving new city facilities. Now, there can be some discussion about whether or not to go into executive session on this. My preference is that we not do that unless there's some specific reason for doing so. What do you think?
Madam Mayor, I believe we've got John Gaylord on the line, and he may have something for you in executive session, so it may be appropriate to move into executive session to receive that advice.
I was concerned that this is, it should be public record and open to our public because this is a big, big item. However, there are reasons to go into executive session, so when we come out, if there's any questions or we can further explain what we've talked about, so it's not behind-the-scenes kind of thing. So, I think we should go into executive session.
Just for clarification, are we supposed to go into executive session to discuss purchase of real estate? Or is that not a requirement?
Mayor and members of the council, John Gaylord here. It is, it's not a requirement, Councilmember Marks, but it is a specific reason, it's a specific authority for executive session that we have. So, I think the open meeting law recognizes that discussing real estate purchases is one reason that public bodies should be able to have some level of private discussion. So, you don't have to.
My preference is that we move into executive session.
Yeah, I agree.
We would need a motion, a second.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session.
Second.
Hold in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Do we tell them?
So, good folks, wait. Can we tell them, really?[117.02]